Hello everybody and welcome to a special airing of interviews with three of the six candidates for Santa Rosa City Council. My name is Elaine B. Holtz and it is my pleasure to bring these candidates to you. The candidates I will be interviewing are the incumbent Ernesto Oliveras and newcomers, Chris Rogers and Jack Tibbetts. All candidates for the Santa Rosa City Council were invited. Local elections are very important as the outcomes can determine our daily lives. Now more than ever, it is essential to vote. It is our hope through these interviews that you will learn more about the candidates and be inspired to cast your ballot. I'm very honored to be able to interview you and I have a few questions. The first question I have for you is, I know this is the third term that you're running. I want to know what motivated you at the very beginning to run for Santa Rosa City Council? And what is your deepest passion?
I tell kids when I talk about my journey here to Santa Rosa, I tell them how I was born dirt poor in Mexico. And when I say that, I said, I mean, our house actually had dirt floors. That's what my mom dealt with as far as sweeping. We kind of wetted it down. But I say, my parents brought me to a better life of poverty in the United States where we worked as farm workers. So we settled up in Northern California in Colusa County where we pretty much picked crops primarily was working in the prune orchards and picking wallets and other things like that. I come from a family of seven. My father, I believe it was my father that really sparked my interest because I really did not know a lot about what goes on in America as it relates to voting, for example. But I remember after him getting his citizenship and still working in the fields, him taking time off during election days. And again, I'm learning about this process to go to work in the polling booths where he was there to greet voters, to check them off the roster. And I remember him telling me about how that was his civic duty now as a registered voter, as an American citizen, to actually take part in this process. And I remember hanging out with him and him pausing out there as we were working in the hot sun and him kind of looking up and looking around the orchard and he looked at me and says, "You know, Mijo, son," he says, "you don't have to do this." He says, "I'm sorry, we didn't do, we didn't have a better plan for you kids as far as getting you into higher education, but I want you to do something else besides farm work. I want you to, we'll do what we can to get you to go to school and do something else." And for some reason, I decided I want to be a cop. And I don't know why that was because I didn't know police officers. I was afraid of police officers like some typical kids would be. I can never remember having immigration come onto the property and people running away from immigration, for example, even myself hiding even though I was here legally. But for some reason, that's what I wanted to do and he supported that decision. But that's what got me to San Rosa in 1979 and started my, what almost coming on to a 38-year, years of public service in Santa Rosa.
So were you the first one in your family that graduated high school?
No, I'm the first one in my family to go to actual, an actual college. And it was a big deal for us because it was junior college and for me, that was a big deal. And you know, with the help of my father and taking out some part-time jobs, we were able to gather enough resources and apply for some grants to be able to get me into junior college to do that. Even some of my teachers really believed that I would be a farm worker growing up. So it was him that gave me that spark. And I'll tell you, it was really, it felt like I was, like I was released, like he freed me from the fields to be able to do anything I wanted to do. And coming here in 1979 to start my job with the Santa Rosa Police Department was just the biggest moment of my life. And I thought, you know what? This is it. It doesn't get any better than this. I'm going to be a police officer for the city of Santa Rosa for my entire career and I will be happy. I did not know what other opportunities would present themselves to me, being able to be promoted within the organization, first a sergeant, then to lieutenant, managing different assignments within the organization like child abuse and family violence issues. At the end of my career, being given the opportunity to manage the city's gang prevention intervention services, for example.
So what is it, what is it that you bring to the table that you feel that you can give to the citizens here of Santa Rosa?
I think what I bring to the council are a lot of the tools that I was able to learn being a police officer and being a manager within the police department. And that is problem solving. To me, it's no different than a higher level approach of community policing where as a police officer, learning the techniques and value of community policing, interacting and trying to blur that slash that we have, police-community relations, to look at it more, how the police are a part of the community. You know, there are neighbors, their kids go to school with our kids and to try to really blend that. But when it came to problem solving, it's looking at long-term issues. It's more than just responding to a burglary here or stolen bicycle there, but looking at broader neighborhood and community issues, recognizing that I can't come into a neighborhood with all the answers because I may not have them because I don't live there. But to come in and to gather community leaders, residents, schools, churches, others that have some relevant and important background about the issue to work together to try to find some viable solutions has been big for me. And it's the same practice I try to use as a council member.
What do you think are some of the challenges that the city is facing now? And how do you, how do you feel that you can handle them or what do you bring to the table to help those issues?
Well, we have a number of issues, but there are some that really rise to the top as far as big, big community issues where you can use the same approach. But, and they're actually tied together. The first is homelessness. It's addressing our homeless issues in Santa Rosa and the other is a need for housing at all levels. And starting with the homeless issue, here again, we have an issue that historically we as a community, and communities do this around the country, have looked to law enforcement to fix, looking at it as a criminal violation of sorts perhaps. And where we're really dealing with minor infractions possibly, maybe some behavioral issues, maybe some alcohol, mental health issues. But typically, when there's a need to intervene with the homeless population, we have turned to law enforcement. So again, just as we talked about gang issues, who in Santa Rosa is not impacted by gang violence? We all are in some way or another, right? Who in Santa Rosa is not impacted by homelessness? We all are, right? Either you are, you have somebody approaching you, asking for money, you see the person on the exit ramp, whatever the case may be, we're all impacted. So why, why wouldn't we as a community come together and look for long-term solutions to our homeless problem, which is going to be putting people into housing? Because that's the answer to homelessness is housing, getting somebody into a permanent house. It's things like coordinated entry. Instead of having a homeless person get on a waiting list for six different shelters, how about having a central point of contact where they can register in one spot and then, and also be involved in what we call a risk assessment so that the most vulnerable are being housed first, which brings the other component, housing first. We have people out on the streets that are dealing with substance abuse issues, not all, mental health issues, and not all again, but oftentimes we want to fix them before we get them into housing. Can you imagine trying to recover from addiction or mental health on the streets? And sometimes I wonder, what came first? I can imagine if I've been out there in the streets in the cold winter trying to survive, am I going to be suffering some mental health issues after a while? Absolutely. May I consider turning to the bottle for some comfort? Probably. So what a better place to help them than when they're in shelter. So it goes to a housing first model of get them into some temporary shelter, some home, some housing, then start addressing some of the issues or concerns that we may have as it relates to substance abuse or whatever else their needs are. It could be job placement, for example. And then the housing. Housing suddenly, it's upon us and it seems like it suddenly came upon us, but it's been probably in the making for a while. I think we can all recall, not too long ago, driving around Santa Rosa and seeing some pretty big and bright banners hanging from our apartment complexes with property owners begging us to come in, offering us a month or two of free rent, right? Now we're begging for a place to live because we can't find them. It's a struggle, it's competitive. So we have a need, and as the economy continues to grow, so will our need for housing. We cannot delay. We have been working on the city council for quite a while now with a long-term housing plan. And a lot of that work is also what policies we need to change within the city to make it easier for houses to be built.
Well, a big decision that's going to have to be made now is around Measure O. So I want to just read this question to make sure that I have it correct. You know, in 2004, and I remember when this happened, the council adopted an ordinance which imposed a special tax to generate revenues to be used for specific police, fire, and gang prevention and intervention program. The special tax ballot measure known as Measure O was approved by over two-thirds of the voters. I remember that very well. I mean, that was a real fought battle for that. And I know that you were really involved with it because of the gang prevention component. Well, this year, the Santa Rosa City Council unanimously voted to place a local measure on the November ballot to amend the funding formula of Measure O. It would change the funding for the police, fire, and gang prevention programs from a set dollar amount to a percentage of the general fund. Is that correct?
Pretty much. And Measure O is one of those things that, one of those measures that we have, that we've had, like you said, since 2004. And we enacted it for 20 years. But there are very few, I believe there are very few residents of Santa Rosa who fully comprehend and understand all the complexities of Measure O because it was a very complex tax measure because it was a special tax, because it could only be used for specific purposes separate from a general tax which could be used for just about anything related to the general fund. So I was very happy to be a part of that effort to change things. So we're looking for solutions and different ways of approaching this problem. And we saw that communities that were being successful were not relying solely on law enforcement. They had a very strong component related to prevention, intervention, the enforcement, and the reentry.
So in this, this measure that's on the ballot is not to take Measure O away?
No, absolutely not.
People have to be clear, you know, because a lot of people, I know, I sit on the, I sit on the committee and oftentimes people say, "Well, they're going to take Measure O?" And I say, "No." So why don't you explain exactly what the, and if you support it?
The main thing that Measure O did for Santa Rosa is it provided enhanced public safety services. So it wasn't like we were in dire straits as it relates to fire and police services. We had a pretty good level, but the community wanted more and they wanted some services for gang prevention intervention services. And they did build in some mechanisms related to funding allocations as it relates to baselines. And they also considered bad things happening, meaning budgetary things happening. So it did allow for the city council, any cities, any sitting council to declare a fiscal crisis that would allow them to go below the baseline and not fund police and fire at the levels that were required in accordance with the ordinance. So that was that relief that was done so that other departments wouldn't suffer. And we, and we as a council, I was part of two councils that enacted that twice during the recession. Measure O also saved us during the recession as it relates to public safety because we had the enhanced level of service where other, other cities were laying off police officers. Major cities like San Jose are still recovering. Oakland is still recovering from the number of layoffs that they had. Where did some of those officers go? Some of them came to Santa Rosa because we had vacancies and we had the resources to maintain a level of public safety in Santa Rosa. So now the key question related to Measure O is, is re-establishing a different baseline for that allocation to public safety. And one of the things that was of concern to me over time was ensuring that we didn't roll back or jeopardize that level of public safety that we've become accustomed to in Santa Rosa and that we didn't jeopardize the hard work that we've done in turning things around as it relates to youth and gang violence to really deal with that. I have, and so over time, part of my research on that was, was trying to get information from police and fire specifically on their ability to continue to deliver services with a new baseline. And also with the employees, I have to hear from both, you know, because...
So when you talk about baseline, because people get a little bit confused about that, you're talking about the budget, how much money and where the money comes from. Am I correct?
Right. It's a level, it's a level of general fund resource that has to be allocated to police and fire because we always want to be worried about supply team. It's such a complex issue that I really, really encourage residents and voters to study, to look for the history of Measure O because it's a very complex issue. It's not, it wasn't just a simple tax measure. It does a lot of things. But, but now it makes the, it resets the baseline to a different year than what we had before. That's the key. And the important thing for me too, more important than this discussion really, is what we had before as Measure P. That was a more recent quarter cent sales tax, which was a general tax that is going to expire very, very, very soon, 2018. So the other item on the ballot is to ask Santa Rosa residents to renew Measure P, which is now, I believe, Measure N, to renew that for another eight years. So it's a date certain because through Measure P, we have been able to do a lot of things that we would not have been able to do, especially during the recession. And we're not completely out of the woods yet. We need a little bit more relief for more time. But I also believe it's important for us to demonstrate to the community how we are spending those resources. We don't always do a good enough job of telling the story of how we allocate resources. We need to engage the community more so they really understand how their money is being spent. And if we didn't have this, what kind of things would we, would we be doing without? Because we, we would be doing without a lot of, a lot of resources. Because we're looking at, I believe it's over $8 million a year that we would be losing if we didn't have it. So that's important.
So I'm safe in saying that you support Measure O, you support the ballot measure and also on Measure P?
Absolutely. I supported putting both of those on the ballot as two separate items because I wanted to make sure that our voters have a clear choice on what they want to do. Because there was some, some discussions about putting the old Measure P and Measure O as part of one item. So your decision Elaine, as a voter would be, okay, I agree, we do need to change the language on Measure O. I agree with that. But doggone it, they haven't really demonstrated to me well enough how they spent that other, those other tax dollars for Measure P. I'm not okay extending that, but I, but I'm okay doing this. So you had to vote either yes or no, but it was for both combined. Or you could say, "No, I'm comfortable with Measure O and the way it is. I don't want to change that." And, and, but Measure P, you know, so you as a voter, if they were combined, had three choices, yes, no, or like some of us do on measures on the ballot. I don't know, no, I don't know enough about this item, so I'm going to leave it blank because I don't know if I'm going to do myself harm or good by checking the box. So it's yes, no, or I don't know. When you separate the two items on the ballot, you now have 11 choices.
Well, it's interesting though, because people need to understand that Measure O, you're just improving the baseline of where the funds come from. And with Measure P, you're deciding whether you're going to extend the tax or not. So it's like two separate, two separate things.
Yes. That's why it was so important to keep them as two separate items on the ballot. So we didn't want to cause more confusion. The important thing was to have them both on the ballot at the same time so that, so that everything was transparent, everything was out. And really, really, and I can do this now is encourage people, do your homework, not just on those, but on every ballot measure because they can be so confusing.
Well, Councilman Ernesto Oliveras, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for doing this interview and providing us with all the information and background about yourself. And I wish you much success in your upcoming reelection. And thank you so much for being here.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Wonderful interview.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Ernesto Oliveras. I'm a council member here for the city of Santa Rosa and I'm running for reelection this year. I have been in Santa Rosa since 1979, having served on the Santa Rosa Police Department for about 30 years. And at the end of my term on the, on the, on the police department, I went ahead and transitioned into a public office as a council member. It was an interesting transition for me, having been, having been spending 30 years here as a law enforcement officer. It felt to me at the end of these 30 years that I wasn't quite done yet. I was still young, I was just barely over 50 years old. At the time, I was getting ready to retire, our community was just about facing a big, big recession that we all went through that was really devastating to our communities and really across the country. And for me, it just did not feel right to leave off into the sunset as a retired police officer. I felt that I still had a lot to offer our community. I have become a part of this community, having spent 30 years here, now going to my 38th year of public service. And for me, it seemed like the best logical next step was to run for city council. Having known the city from the inside out, I thought it was something that I could bring to the council as far as having a clear understanding of how the city operates, how the different departments operate, but most importantly, what is important to our community in Santa Rosa. It's been, it's been a wonderful experience serving on the council, but most of my time has been dealing with a very tough recession. And we did a lot of work through that. As mayor, I instituted a couple of task forces to help us along. One of them was an economic competitiveness task force that really helped bringing stakeholders together to try to improve our economy. And with that, and the changes that were made, there were over thousands and thousands of jobs that came to Santa Rosa as a result of some of those efforts. Another issue that we were facing during the recession was pensions, pension reform. It became a very hot topic for not just Santa Rosa, but the nation and specifically here in California. Another task force that I developed was a pension reform task force that was led from, that was led by council, council member Scott Bartley at the time. And through that task force, they came up with a number of recommendations on changes that we could implement here in Santa Rosa to start making some significant improvements in our pension programs. I'm happy to report that we implemented everything possible that we as a city could implement. And now we wait on changes at the state level to give us more tools and opportunities to continue to refine and tweak our pension plans to the point where they can be sustainable for our community and other communities as well. Going into my next term here, my third term, we face some very serious issues in Santa Rosa. Two of them that are really tied together are issues related to our homeless population and also issues related to housing. Here in Santa Rosa, just like we have across the state and across the country, we deal with homeless issues. They're not new to us, they're not new to Santa Rosa, they're not new to any community. In fact, the numbers of homeless in Santa Rosa and Sonoma County has actually dropped. However, the visibility has increased. Part of that is due to the smart train coming through Sonoma County where many homeless who had been living in the rail corridor have been displaced onto surface streets. It's also an effort community-wide to clean our creek systems and waterways and many of the homeless population that had been living in those creek systems are now on the surface streets as well. One of the things I want to do related to our homeless population is to change the way we approach it. When I look at homelessness in Santa Rosa, we need to take ownership of our homeless population. They are our, mostly our residents, even though the county is the one that's responsible for providing social services, it's our issue. So we have a responsibility to bring stakeholders together, to find long-term solutions to solve our homeless population. And that means putting people into permanent housing. That is the only solution to homelessness. And it's also an effort to keep people from becoming homeless in Santa Rosa at a future time. And to that end, it's getting to a point of functional zero where we get people turned around into housing as soon as possible. And housing is going to be a long, a long haul, but I'm here to continue to work with our community stakeholders to find long-term solutions to find housing at every level of the spectrum. Thank you and I appreciate your vote this November.
Well, welcome, Jack Tibbetts. Welcome to the interviews for the Santa Rosa City Council. I want to welcome you.
Thank you. It's an opportunity to be here. I appreciate it.
Well, I have a few questions for you and I'm just going to look at them right here. What motivated you, Jack, to run for the Santa Rosa City Council? And what is your deepest passion?
So I decided to run for the Santa Rosa City Council. Kind of stems from being a local boy from Santa Rosa. I grew up here, I was born and raised here. And I came home after graduating from college about three and a half years ago. And when I came home, it was bittersweet. It was sweet because it was nice to be home again in the place where I want to put roots down, start a family someday. But it was also a little bit bitter because I was looking at a lot of the friends that I grew up with who had gone off to college or gone off and gotten vocational training. And they'd come back and they're kind of looking, many of them are trying, in transition and trying to look for a place to go and where can they get a job to pair with that vocational training or degree. And I'd like to increase the opportunities out there for my generation and everybody for that matter. I've spent time working for the Sonoma County Economic Development Board. I've worked heavily in Roseland and I have a huge passion for helping, helping people seek opportunities and find the opportunities to get ahead in life. And I've been active in that, in that field. So I'm hoping to apply that to the city council as well.
Where did that passion come from? I mean, that's very interesting that you wanted to come back to help to make sure that other young people would stay in the city. Where did, where did that come from? Why was that important to you?
You know, I'm not sure where that came from. Sometimes I wonder if, I actually, I went to Catholic elementary school and one thing that always resonated with me and stuck with me is serving the greater good. And that's one thing that I think my pro-cial school upbringing did a good job of instilling in me at a young age. And so that's the only thing I could really point to is a life well-lived is a life in service.
Oh, that's beautiful. I couldn't have said it any better myself. Well, you know, what experience, you know, you're, I'm sure you hear this all the time that you're young, you know, why are you running, et cetera? So explain to our viewing audience what experience that you bring to the table? Why do you think that you would be effective on the Santa Rosa City Council?
Well, I think my ability to be effective comes with strong relationships I have with people who represent the variety of interests that make up Santa Rosa. You know, I have close relationships with people in the business community, relationships with people in the labor community, relationships with people in the environmental community. And I think that's an important quality or trait to have in one of your elected officials is somebody who's able to work effectively and communicate effectively with everybody. Because chances are, most issues that come before the city council are issues that are uncontroversial. From time to time, you get those issues that come forward that are controversial and you need an effective communicator, somebody with those relationships in place to try to find, to bring about consensus around issues.
What are some of the things that you've done to demonstrate that experience?
Ah, good question. So I, right when I graduated from UC Berkeley, I got a job with the Sonoma County Economic Development Board. And right there was where I really kind of got my feet wet in public policy.
Oh, I got to ask you one question. So you worked with Ben Stone?
I did. Ben was, he was my boss's boss and therefore my boss too. But Ben's a great guy.
He is.
But working for Ben in the Economic Development Board, my job was to work on policies that helped low and moderate income entrepreneurs start their own businesses. So I got to work with a number of entrepreneurs to help them launch, identify some of the barriers to entry that keep low and moderate income entrepreneurs from starting their business. You know, we found that marketing was continually an issue. You know, without effective marketing, you couldn't build up a strong customer base to sustain your business. We found that there were procedural issues such as just being able to access a business license from somebody who speaks Spanish was an issue and that kind of was a barrier. So it was my job to identify those barriers and then put forward policy solutions to remove them. So that was my first, I think, real experience with public policy. Shortly thereafter, I went and started working for California Clean Power. And when I was working there, it was my job specifically to work with elected officials in the city council level, the board of supervisor level, to help them pass ordinance to do community choice energy, which is what we have here in Sonoma County, which we call Sonoma Clean Power. So my job was to help those jurisdictions break away from PG&E and the incumbent utility, increase their use of renewable energy in their energy portfolios, and give rate payers and the citizens more local control over that, that amount of renewable energy in their energy portfolio. You know, just continuing on, and as you know, I've been really active in the community just in a volunteer capacity. We did the Roseland Cup after the Andy Lopez tragedy as a way to try to bring the community and law enforcement officers together and kind of humanize with, with one another and just have a comfortable, organic atmosphere to communicate and have a dialogue. I was very active in helping establish the Roseland Community Library. I've been active with the homeless community and trying to bring about housing solutions for the homeless, most recently with the Tiny House Initiative that's now being carried by Supervisor Shirley Zane. So I just try to get involved wherever I can, however I can.
It's amazing, you know, it's amazing that you're so committed to service like this. You know, and I'm just thinking about the Roseland Cup. I just want our listener, excuse me, our viewers to understand that the Roseland Cup was based on a program that I knew from East LA, which was the Police Athletic League.
Yes.
Where they brought youth together with the police and it just gave them more, you know, more comfort, more ability to learn. And I just want to congratulate you for that. That was amazing that you pulled that together. And you're going to do that again this year, am I correct?
Yes, next Saturday. And actually, I want to take this opportunity to tell your viewers that, to give you Elaine all the credit for that because it was your idea. So we just implemented it.
Well, thank you. I'm not running for office though. Get that clear. Anyway, I have another question for you. You know, you've, you've had a lot of work experience, especially when you worked with the economic development, you actually get, you, you have your hand and your pulse on the idea of what's going on in the business community. Talk to us about what are some of the things that you see that the city has to work on and perhaps change and how your experience would help implement those changes?
Well, for, for one thing, I think that the city needs to do a better job of actually marketing our city to other businesses, looking at industry clusters that are springing up in surrounding regions, most notably over in Marin. They have, biotech is becoming a very strong and rapidly developing industry there. We should also be looking at, okay, what are some of those pick and shovel companies that can support the biotech industry in Marin and also in the Greater Bay Area? And can we bring some of those firms here? Because we know that we have a number of young people who are going off and getting degrees right now in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. It would be very applicable to that type of industry cluster. So that's just one thing. Other things that we can do, although the square, the old courthouse square came in Other things that we can do, although the square, the old courthouse square came in in kind of a haphazard way, as I've been talking to a lot of people at their door, I've been hearing a lot of complaints about the lack of public input or transparency around that whole process. And although I think that's true and valid, I think that the square is going to be a good thing. I think it's going to be exciting. I think it's going to be a catalyst for more and positive development downtown. At least that's my hope. And so I think that that's going to also kind of help with our business development efforts.
Well, that's interesting that you say that. You know, I know most people are waiting for that square to be built, you know. I can't wait till, especially with the traffic that's going on right now.
Yeah, it's a bit of a nuisance.
Well, I want to ask you a question, and I want to read this just to make sure that I'm really clear on this and give you an opportunity to understand what I'm trying to say. Like, in 2004, the council adopted an ordinance which imposed a special tax to generate revenues to be used for specific police, fire, and gang prevention and intervention programs. The special tax ballot measure was known as Measure O was approved by two-thirds of the voters, which was amazing. This year, the Santa Rosa City Council unanimously voted to place a local measure on the November ballot to amend the funding formula of Measure O. And people need to really understand that amend the funding formula of Measure O. It would change the funding for the police, fire, and gang prevention programs from a set dollar amount to a percentage of the general fund. Do you support this measure? And can you give us an explanation of why?
Yes, I do support this measure. I think that the measure as previously written, although it was good, served the purpose that the voters voted to have it serve, which was to ensure that during economic recessions that we would have a strong and robust public safety, police force, firefighting units. It did that job. The only problem with it was the ratchet effect, which is the Consumer Price Index, two to three percent that would go up every year with inflation. That's how we would ensure that the baseline was maintained with inflation. Well, the problem with that is that during the recession, when the budgets were decreasing, that ratchet effect was bringing the baseline higher and higher. And that put us in a precarious situation a couple of times. Fortunately, the council, they had an overriding mechanism where five of the seven council members voted to essentially suspend that portion of the ordinance. Then they could manipulate the budget as they needed to during economic recession. And they did that twice. But the problem is, is that you may not have a council that's willing to do that all the time. And I think that the public elects their candidates into elected office to make those decisions about budgets. And we, that council entrusts a city manager and a city manager's office to know what's best for the budget. And then as a council member, we look at it and say, okay, this seems acceptable, or we need to probably make alterations here. And Measure O just didn't, as written, didn't really allow us to do that. I think that Measure O, you know, I actually have to applaud Fire and Police because they don't seem to be opposing this change. I think that they understand that it's an okay change. And they did win, you know, win from that previous ballot measure. You know, we, I think they saw the 50% going to public safety of the general fund budget increasing to about 58. So it did help our public safety department. And so I think it's a win all around for us to come away with this ballot measure.
Well, you know, I sit on the committee. I actually, it's so interesting to be voting, you know, and you vote on these budgetary things are very interesting. And they have a 20, they have 40, 40, 20, 20 for gang prevention. How do you, how do you see that 20% being spent with gang prevention? How do you, what are some of the things that you see after working with youth and working with the soccer and all the different things you're doing?
I think that's an excellent way to spend public money is on after-school programs in particular. And I know proceeds of that money has supported those efforts. I would like to see a lot of this money, or some of this money, go to kind of counter gang graffiti that's been going up in the city recently. A friend and a friend of mine reached out and had pointed out that the public arts budget is actually going towards painting over graffiti, which I think when passed public arts and culture was to actually create art in public places, not cover up gang graffiti. So I'd like to see more of that money go towards countering gang graffiti. But, you know, trying to get, you know, stop gangs from the youth level is the way to do it. And I've seen that all the time. And just bringing youth together with law enforcement, they quickly find that they have far more in common than they do differences. And so I think it's important, whenever we can engage those two groups, we should.
So you definitely support, I imagine, that Measure O, the change that they're going to make. Do you think it'll make it easier for you as a council member when the budgetary questions and authorization comes up?
Yes, I do. I think I personally support the change and I think it will make it easier to come up with a viable budget.
Well, Jack Tibbetts, I want to thank you for being in this interview and I want to wish you much, much success on your up-and-coming election. And thank you so much for coming in and being part of it.
Yeah, thanks for having me. Hi there. My name is Jack Tibbetts, and I'm running for the Santa Rosa City Council because I care deeply about this city and its future. I was born and raised right here in Santa Rosa. In fact, I was born at the old Sutter Hospital and I attended St. Eugene's and Montgomery High School. After Montgomery, I spent time traveling throughout North America as a professional athlete, and I had the opportunity to visit many beautiful places. However, despite their attraction, I decided to return home to Santa Rosa after college to put down my roots. After graduating from UC Berkeley, I became active in the community. Nothing excites me more than the opportunity to move our city forward in a positive direction. That's why I've been spending most of my time over the past few years doing everything I can to help solve problems and improve our city. I've created a nonprofit called Warm for the Holidays to help provide much-needed resources to our homeless every winter. I've written housing policy for the County of Sonoma to provide permanent housing solutions for the homeless. I've organized annual sports events to bring youth in the community together with law enforcement to build positive relationships. And most recently, I helped the effort to introduce a new library in Roseland on Sebastopol Road as a board member on the Sonoma County Public Library Foundation. I also currently serve on the City of Santa Rosa's Board of Public Utilities, and I serve on several nonprofit boards, including Community Action Partnership and the PDI Surgery Center. But now I want to channel my energy into improving things from our city council, where we can do even more to prepare our city for the future. Santa Rosa is at a critical but exciting time. We've got to adapt to change while still preserving everything that makes the city so special. I believe that if we act now, we can define the Santa Rosa that we want rather than letting rising housing costs and population growth define us. There are many things I'd like to tackle on the city council, from properly maintaining our roads, bringing city services to Roseland, expanding our use of renewable energy and electric vehicles, and more. However, today I want to talk about the issue of this election season, housing. Housing is perhaps the single most important aspect of our lives. Without housing, there cannot be stable employment. And without stable employment, there cannot be continuity in our businesses. We put ourselves at risk if our police officers and firefighters have to commute an hour or more to the city when responding to a disaster. Our teachers cannot focus on teaching and preparing tomorrow's lesson plan because they're spending too many hours commuting today. And a child's development cannot be nurtured if they are constantly being displaced to different school districts, or worse, are relegated to living in cars or a shelter because housing costs are too high. And this is happening every day. This is our reality. We can be much better. We can have affordable housing in mixed-income neighborhoods. We can have more vibrant and lively downtown if we focus our growth and development to this area. Our residents and businesses will thrive from this change. I want the next generation of children to have the same opportunities I did, and opportunities always begin at home in our neighborhoods. To solve the housing crisis, it will take more than decision-making. It will take a council member who is willing to focus their time and energy into working with builders, housing advocates, city staff, academics, and residents. Just researching the issue won't solve the crisis. It takes continual investigation and forming partnerships with everyone who can bring new perspectives and ideas to the table. We can do this, folks. I know we can. Why? Because Santa Rosa is full of leaders who are accomplishing great things every day. But when we work together, there's nothing we can't accomplish. I want to be your advocate on the city council. If you know my track record of getting things done, of turning ideas into action, you know I will bring the energy, commitment, and continual inquiry to the table that is required. Thank you so much, and I hope that I may earn your support.
It's good to see you and good, I'm very, very happy that you're running for city council. And I have a few questions to ask you. What motivated you to run for the Santa Rosa City Council? And what is your deeper passion, your deeper desires?
So I'm running because I wanted to build a more livable Santa Rosa. I am from Santa Rosa. I grew up here, raised around Sonoma County. And I care very deeply about this community. It's where I want to raise a family. I've helped represent our community for almost a decade, starting at the congressional level as an aide for Lynn Woolsey back when I was in college, and finishing up most recently as senior staff for Mike McGuire, our state senator. I've been really involved in local policy, working on the task force for the homeless and the area agency on aging, Santa Rosa Community Advisory Board, among other things. And I was really tired of watching good policy fail because of bad politics. I care a lot about this community and I want to make it a better place for everybody to live. And I felt like I had a lot to contribute.
You know, it's very interesting that you worked with Mike McGuire. Can you tell us a little bit about that experience? What did you learn and what did you, what did you turn away or, you know, you turned it down because I know you could have continued? What made you want to go further than just working for him?
Well, I think when you look at somebody like Mike McGuire, who lives and breathes representing his community, is always the hardest working person in the room, is always representing and doing what he needs to do to understand the issues at the level that he needs to, and seeing really good legislation that he's pushed forward not go on, you start to realize how many more good people you need in public service. I'll give you a great example. We helped represent a little community called Lucerne up in Lake County. And I talk about Lucerne a lot to people, even though it's not Santa Rosa, because for me, it shows the way that government can help people. They had a private water utility company that came in and built a new water treatment plant that spiked the water rates for seniors. So some up to about $600 a billing period. We had seniors that were calling us crying because they could not afford their water rates. And the irony is that they live right up against the largest natural freshwater body in the state. They couldn't afford their water rates. And we were trying in Sacramento to help these people and politics was getting in the way. And then we were working on a coastal bill banning offshore oil drilling off of California's coast, literally while the Refugio oil spill happened down in Santa Barbara in committee, could not get the bill out of committee. And I'm really proud of all the things that I've worked on, especially the ones that we've worked on that haven't passed. And seeing the need in our community and being very attuned to the needs of our most vulnerable populations was the motivating factor to actually step up and try to represent.
That must be a hard one, must be disappointing when you know that it's going to do some good for the community and yet it doesn't, it doesn't go through. How did that, how did you handle that?
Well, the good thing about public service is that it's really local. And what I mean by that is oftentimes there's other ways that we help people as well. Yes, we work on broad issues at the state level that will affect, you know, millions of people in this state. But we also help people with things like the DMV or the Franchise Tax Board. And every time you can help somebody on an individual level and make their life better, you show how government can be successful. So it was difficult to leave his office because as frustrating as the losses are, the victories in being able to make somebody's life better are really rewarding and make you feel great about the work that you're doing. Very happy to, I moved over to a local green energy company where I'm working to make green energy more accessible to all families, working class and low-income families as well. That's really rewarding as well. But always loved public service and wanted to find another way to contribute.
Well, you know, one interesting thing that you said in your past statement was, is that how important it is to find good people that understand things. So tell me, what do you bring to the table? What is your experience and why do you think that you can get things done?
So I actually have a really deep knowledge of policy for our community. I've served on eight different boards or commissions, as I mentioned. I know the issues really well. But more important is that I come from a very compassionate background. I was actually raised by my mom, who works with developmentally delayed children under the age of five. And growing up, she would always tell me that this was the population that you should be helping because they were our most vulnerable. You can actually see that in some of the work that we did at the state level, fighting to keep the Sonoma Developmental Center open and make sure that the residents that were there did not fall onto the streets or end up in our prisons as they start to close the center. And for me, being willing to work with anybody and being outcome-oriented and not a strict ideologue on how you're going to get there is really important. Because I care about helping people. I cared about helping lift children out of poverty and was flexible on how we would get there. And I have a proven track record of doing that. So I think my experience mixed with my understanding of policy and understanding of our community with a sincere desire to make people's lives better is what's going to make me successful and ultimately allow me to represent and help this community.
Well, thank you. I guess flexibility is what you're saying is very, very important in this position.
It is.
I know it's so hard, you know, you have to please so many people. You have to please your constituents, you have to please the people on the council. I mean, it's really, it's not an easy place to be.
Well, I think you also have to take a long-term view of what you're working on. If you are burning bridges over a short-term temporary issue or just one thing, these are four-year terms. A lot of people serve one or two terms, and it's a long-term view that you should take to where no permanent enemies, be willing to work with anybody, and actually understand where people are coming from. Why did they make the decision that they did, even if it was against what you chose? So that you can develop that relationship to be able to continue to work with people.
Oh, I agree with you 100%. Great. Well, you know, I know you've observed the city for a long time, you know, especially working with Mike. I know he has a lot of issues back and forth, you know, him serving on the, as the board of supervisors and then going on to the Senate. What things can you identify that are problematic in the city? And how do you feel that they can be solved? And what would you do to contribute to that solution?
Well, I, we talk a lot about housing and homelessness. And so I'm happy to talk about that. But I think there's an overarching problem in our city where far too many people feel disengaged from the actual process. I mean that on housing, I mean that on roads, that people don't necessarily trust the outcome of the decisions being made at City Hall because they feel like they weren't involved in it as much as they would like to be. So I've been very passionate about on the Santa Rosa Community Advisory Board, about giving us more ways to involve our neighborhoods. We actually started a project where we literally go into neighborhoods now, it's happening right now for our second year, and we will ask people, what potholes do they need fixed? What bike lanes should be fixed? Where do they need a stop sign or a stoplight? Asking people for the feedback on what affects them at their local level, and then making sure that the city council is working to implement that. They actually approved $3 million for this project to take care of some of the feedback that we got last year. I'm hopeful that we're going to continue to do this. I think what we've seen over and over again, when Measure A failed, for instance, is that people want to be more engaged in the decisions being made. We need to give them that opportunity.
You know, it's interesting that you say that because I think as most politicians need to recognize one important thing is that we vote for you to serve us, not to tell us, but to listen to us and to try to help solve the problem. So I think that's very important. Would you agree with that?
I think it's also a little bit of both. I think that a lot of the issues that we are facing right now are really exhausting in their complexity. And the average person, if they're struggling to put food on the table for their kids, doesn't have time to read the ins and the outs of road funding, for example, where, how the gas tax is going to be allocated. And what we need to do a good job of in this city, I think we're moving in this direction but could do better, is synthesizing that information and having a dialogue with people, not a one-way message. And it's my biggest complaint about government is government takes their message and pushes it on the public. Whereas you and I, as friends on Facebook, I'll post something, you'll like it, you'll comment, and we've got this instantaneous feedback and dialogue that goes on. We need to actually interact with the public more on that way and explain how the city made the decisions that they did in a way that the average person who might not live and breathe what's going on at City Hall still feels like they understand and still feels like they have a role in addressing our big challenges.
Right. And I think it builds more trust. And the more trust you have, the more the city can move forward.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for that answer. And I have one last question here, and I want to read this to make sure that I get it right. And it's all about Measure O. In 2004, the council adopted an ordinance which imposed a special tax to generate revenues to be used for specific programs, police, fire, and gang prevention and various intervention programs. The special tax ballot measure, known as Measure O, was approved by over two-thirds of the voters. And I remember that. In fact, I sit on the Measure O Committee. I mean, I vote on it, so I know some of these issues. This year, the Santa Rosa City Council unanimously voted to place a local measure on the November ballot to amend the funding formula of Measure O. It would change the funding for the police, fire, and gang prevention program from a set dollar amount to a percentage of the general fund. Do you agree with that and why?
I do. And I do want to say, in serving as a legislative representative on the Violence Prevention Partnership, I did also get to see a lot of the good things that were funded out of Measure O, the gang prevention work that they're doing in our schools in particular. But what we saw in the last recession was with the baseline that's in the current Measure O, as the city's revenue went down, public safety was a larger and larger chunk of our budget, cutting into things like roads and parks and recreation. Where we actually are now, coming out of the recession, according to the Press Democrat from a couple months ago, is police and fires at about 103% of their staffing level, which is great. We actually have a lower crime rate than most cities our size in the state. But Parks and Rec is down 30%. Economic Development's down 19% of their total staff. When we talk about the broader issues, when we talk about having a nexus study to see if we need to raise fees to be able to address our housing issues faster by hiring more staff, that's a budget flexibility issue. I have a master's in public administration where I've been trained in municipal budgeting. I am always going to argue for more flexibility in the budget, with the caveat that we need to continue to explain to the public how we are using the funds and making sure that they're involved in those decisions as well.
Well, it's interesting, because this is not going to get rid of Measure O. This is just going, what you're saying is going to add more flexibility to the budget.
Right.
Anything else you'd like to say about this measure?
No, I think it's been a very interesting one to see on the ballot, and it hasn't really had much of a campaign for it. We also have Measure N that's on the ballot, which is an extension of a sales tax measure in the city. And that one's received a little bit more attention, but they go together. So remember Measures O and N on.
Well, it's interesting. People need to understand that Measure O is not, is not going to go away. It's just, you're just making the budget more flexible.
It's just an amendment to it.
But Measure N is, the question is, are we going to extend this tax?
Correct.
Well, since you mentioned Measure N, what is your thought on that?
Yeah, I think that we need to extend it. I think that the city does not have a plan in place to address the millions of dollars that we would lose in tax revenue. And once we extend it, we need to actually have a real conversation about how we reduce our reliance on sales tax. There is a cap in each jurisdiction on how much sales tax they can have. Santa Rosa's not quite there, but we're close enough to where if we hit another recession, and theoretically, we're in much better times now, if we hit another recession, we don't have a fallback plan in terms of being able to pass more sales tax if we need to. So I'd like to see us wean ourselves off of that a little bit, reinvest more in our rainy day fund to be able to weather the long-term downturns if they come about again. And, but for now, we need to extend Measure P, which is Measure N.
Well, Chris Rogers, I want to thank you for being on with the interview here, and I want to wish you much success with your up-and-coming election.
Thank you so much for having me.
And thank you so much for being here.
My name is Chris Rogers, and I'm running for the Santa Rosa City Council. I come from a public service background. I was born in Santa Rosa and raised around Sonoma County, and I grew up in a nonprofit family. My mom runs a local nonprofit that works with developmentally-delayed children under the age of five. And growing up, the expectation was always that I would work hard and take care of our most vulnerable. So while I was in college, I went to work for the legislature and fell in love with public service. For the last decade, I have helped represent Santa Rosa, most recently serving as senior staff for State Senator Mike McGuire. I've had the opportunity to work on issues that actually matter to our city. I have helped with legislation that has kept seniors in their homes, lifted children out of poverty, and helped protect our coast and our open spaces. I've served on the Sonoma County Task Force for the Homeless, the Area Agency on Aging, and the Violence Prevention Partnership, working on gang prevention issues, and many other boards and commissions. I have worked on real issues that have made people's lives better through our victories and worse through our failures. For me, good policy will always trump bad politics, and working in disadvantaged communities has made me highly sensitive to the struggles that were going on within my own city. Our working-class families and small businesses are being priced out of our neighborhoods. Our roads and infrastructure are crumbling. And far too many people don't have an effective voice in the decisions being made at City Hall. Like many, I struggle to live in this community. Between rising rents and a high cost of living, too many of our families are just trying to get by. Add in student loan debt, and it feels like many of us are trying to build a life with an anchor around our necks. I want Santa Rosa to be a place where planning for our future means investing in public transit and nearby housing that's affordable for everyone, where all you need is a good idea, and you can start a small business and build a better life for you and your family, and where everyone is working together to address our most pressing challenges. If elected to the Santa Rosa City Council, we are going to focus on five areas. The number-one issue facing our city is housing and homelessness. Santa Rosa has a homeless rate three times the national average. I was always taught that if you work hard, get an education, you can pull yourself up by your bootstraps and build a better life. Yet we have 800 SRJC students who go to bed every night in their car or on the street. That's simply unacceptable. We need both short-term and long-term solutions that will develop housing at all economic levels. We need to continue to pursue a housing-first strategy that will get our homeless population into homes and wrap around the services that they need to break the poverty cycle and keep them off the street. We're going to support small business growth and innovation. We are going to develop a website that allows anyone with a good idea to select where they are in their small business development, and it will give them a checklist on what they should be doing. It will also give them a direct contact to someone at the city who can assist them. We need to develop small business incubators and make sure that we are supporting entrepreneurs who want to turn our city into an innovation hub that will bring good jobs back to our community. It should not be rocket science to start a business in Santa Rosa. We are going to address our crumbling roads and infrastructure, and we're going to amplify the voice of neighborhoods in the process. When I was first appointed to the Santa Rosa Community Advisory Board, I was frequently asked why certain areas of town were repaved over and over again while others were ignored. There's a very clear policy answer. It's 26 times cheaper to repave decent roads than it is to rebuild failed roads. But if you live in the areas that aren't being repaved, it doesn't feel very equitable. The reality is, the City of Santa Rosa needs to spend $17.5 million a year just to maintain the quality of roads that we have right now. This year, we're spending about $8 million. And that includes a $3 million infusion of one-time funds that was requested by the Santa Rosa Community Advisory Board to be allocated through a community process. Last year, we held five community meetings to ask the public what potholes they needed fixed, what bike lanes they needed striped. We are currently doing our second year of these meetings right now. And my dream is that this $3 million is the start of participatory budgeting for the city and will serve to better engage our community in the decisions that we make. Finally, we have to seek innovative ways to make green energy accessible to our middle-class and low-income families. The majority of our state's greenhouse gas emissions come from inefficient cars and inefficient vehicles. It's really easy to be an environmentalist if you can afford to put solar panels on your home, or if you can afford to drive a Tesla. And that's not the majority of Santa Rosans. If you are struggling to put food on the table for your family, it's really hard to be an environmentalist. If we want the green movement to succeed, we need to make it accessible to everyone. And I could go on. There are so many issues facing this city: education, public transit, marijuana. I care very deeply about Santa Rosa. I was born here, and it's where I'll raise my family. I am so honored to have the support and endorsement in my campaign of the Sonoma County Democratic